The meeting. You could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll wait till this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to Rutland Town's board meeting. I'd like to start with the approval of the addenda. Any additions, deletions, or changes?
So moved.
Any discussion? It sounds like we are no longer having an S-Back presentation tonight, and instead it is a presentation on the annual snapshot of Rutland Town's poll. And then down under Policies, F-16, the Use of Restraint and Secclusion. The second read does not match our original first read, so I'd like to take that off the agenda for tonight and look into what's going on with that. And also, A-1 has not been finished, so that is also removed from this evening. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up on the addenda are Teacher, Staff, and Community Comments. We have a few online and a couple teachers and parents in the audience. Anyone have any comments or concerns?
We make to the end of the year.
Woo-hoo.
Shh. Yeah.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on. And then, I apologize, there was a little amendment. Our legislative update is actually being given by Senator Josh Terenzini instead of Representative Tom Terenzini, and if he's ready, we'd love to hear from you.
Sure. Would you like to sit here, Tina, or do you have a witness table? Here's good?
Yeah, wherever you're comfortable.
You looking at me like that for what?
Only select workouts do you.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. State Senator Josh Terenzini here to talk for a few minutes about, I guess, the legislative wrap-up here and what we did to help or hurt our education in Vermont. So I'll take a few minutes and walk through a few things. I printed off a few bills I thought were good examples of what we've worked on and things that I thought you might enjoy reading at your convenience. Certainly don't expect you to go through them all tonight, but the one-page sheet that I handed out that says a few educational bills to discuss briefly, I guess I would start there if you objected. So we, the first week, second week of May, we concluded the two-year biennium of the legislative session. As one of your state senators, I serve in the morning on the Health and Welfare Committee and then in the afternoon on the Senate Education Committee. A lot of these bills came from, through my committee, some of them didn't, including the first one on that sheet, H-572, an act relating to the retirement allowance for interim educators. So we heard all along in Montpelier that we are going into this coming fall statewide down over 1,000 teachers that we need to function as, function our schools. And so there was a bill that came through the Finance Committee that had to do with allowing retired teachers to come out of retirement for a one-year period as the state tries to mitigate this big teacher shortage. And it had a lot of retirement implications and pensions and so on that my committee wouldn't necessarily deal with, so that's why I'm not a resident expert on H-572. But thankfully, the governor signed it. It's a bill I supported, and maybe your superintendent has already received documentation from the Department of Education on what this looks like, but we can, for at least a one-year period, allow teachers who have retired, come out of retirement, and it will not affect their pensions negatively if they wish to help us fill some of our vacancies. So I thought that was a pretty good bill that Governor Scott has signed into law. Any questions on that before I move on? No? S-283, I believe I gave everyone copies of. This was called a miscellaneous education bill. I learned very quickly in my time up there that they like miscellaneous bills because you can jam a lot of stuff into it. They call it a Christmas tree, actually. You can hang ornaments off of it, in other words, hanging a bunch of stuff into one bill. So that being said, this bill is 16 pages. It talks mainly about new rules around suspension or expulsion of students. There's quite a few pages around that. It calls for the, also the Agency of Education, to issue a written report to the Senate and House committees on or before the 15th of December in regards to the enrollment for kindergarteners. What is the date that we enroll now, correct? Should it be adjusted, or so on? So this bill talks about that. It also calls for a report and recommendations from the Agency of Education on a statewide uniformed school calendar. So should all school districts be on the same exact calendar? We heard from a lot of families and teachers who said, you know, I have one child in this school, one child in this school, they have opposite weeks off for holiday, you know, winter break and spring break, we can't go on vacations, or I have to pull one of the kids out for a week, or the parents, if they're an educator, they couldn't leave for a break because of that, and so on. So the state is going to report back to the legislature as to should we have a uniformed calendar across the board. And I think that is pretty much what this bill covered. I don't think it's a secret that the, I guess, really the driving force is more the majority party in Montpelier and the current Department of Education. They would very much like to see us get away altogether from suspensions and expulsions and handle disciplinary measures in other factions. I don't think that's the unanimous opinion in Montpelier, but this study would call to see how we could handle it differently, or if there was alternative methods so children were not expelled or suspended. I believe, I don't know if this bill talks about it, we may have done it last year, but there is now a law that states, I don't think eight years old or younger cannot be suspended or expelled. So I don't, Chris, you're shaking your head, yes, I think that's the new current law, right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah. So that was done last year. So this would expand upon that. Questions on S-283? Okay. S-139, this is the one that I put mascots on the front of. This was the bill that was, one of the bills was talked about more than really probably anything throughout the building, the Capitol Building that is. And a lot of it was sort of modeled after what was happening in the Rutland City School District with the Rutland Public Schools' current mascot. So this bill passed both the House and Senate. The governor signed it into law a couple weeks back, and it talks about team mascots, branding, logos, and so on, and doing away with mascots that could be considered offensive. And so this bill talks about that. It's a short little bill, it's only three pages. So it says, just quickly, "The legislative intent is the intent of the General Assembly to ensure that all Vermont schools provide positive and inclusive learning environments for all students by eliminating the use of discriminatory school branding, which undermines the educational experiences of members of all communities and perpetuates negative stereotypes. All Vermont students should feel safe and welcome while enrolled in a Vermont school." So it goes on to talk about that. Basically, there were about two dozen schools in Vermont identified as having questionable mascots, or nicknames, or logos, and so those schools will be given a certain time period to which they can start to change their mascot. There is some state funding involved because it's going to be a big expense. For example, Rutland High School had some type of a quote for around $180,000 it was going to cost the city to rebrand everything from uniforms and helmets to signs to their envelopes and paper and letterhead would need to be changed. So I think the intent of the bill is if you willingly come forward and say, hey, listen, we recognize that our mascot could be questionable in the opinion of some, I believe there is some offset money that could help your school district start the process of rebranding. If the Agency of Education has to come to you after so long and say, hey, listen, what are you doing here? And if you're not recognizing that there's a problem, we recognize there's a problem and we're going to force you to change it. I don't think they want to go there, but I think there is a sort of a carrot and a stick approach here. Thankfully, as far as I know, the Rutland Town Chargers should not be offensive to anyone, so.
What are the penalties, if I could ask, Josh?
I think the biggest penalty is you're not going to get any of that funding that the state will offer to help pay for your rebranding. But I think there is, eventually, if you go down this rabbit hole and these school districts want to dig their heels, and I believe it could get to the point where the Department of Education chooses for you what your nickname and mascot and logo and so on could be. So that's, that is S-139. So that was, that took quite a bit of time this past session. S-100, An Act Relating to Universal School Meals. I didn't print the bill, it's quite a bill. I think most of us here in the room are probably familiar to some extent about S-100. We had a tremendous surplus of money from, basically from COVID. The state accumulated about $2.2 billion from the federal government because of COVID. And that money can be used for, you know, there's specific things, just like school districts and municipalities got money and they could use it for specific things. We had a pool of money that was hotly debated what to do with it, and I also, I should have put on here PCBs, talk about that briefly, so I'm taking that note. And if I go too long, Tina, you can tell me to be quiet. But, so we had a pool of money, $80 million or so, that we could figure out what to do with. I wanted to, I was one of the lead supporters of using as much money as we could for PCB testing in our schools. Thankfully, we came up with about $28 million or so to start testing our schools for PCBs. I wanted to, $45 million, I felt like we needed to make a bigger splash. But, that being said, 28 million is better than nothing. Universal School Meals. We started last year, last legislative session, talking about universal free breakfast. That was the tune of about $8 million. Over the summer into the fall of last year, some started to rally the legislature to make it universal free meals for breakfast and lunch. This now to the best estimate of the legislature and the Department of Education and the Joint Fiscal Office is around $29 million it's going to cost to offer free breakfast and lunch to all students in Vermont. The good news is, we have $29 million to pay for it for one year. The bad news is, the legislature has no idea how they're going to fund it after next year. And the legislature, in my opinion, whoever's, you know, I'm not running for election, but whoever's going back is going to have to figure out how to fund this program. I don't ever see it going away after they've passed it, so now we have to figure out how to fund it and make it sustainable long-term. There are some in the Capitol that feel like this is such an important program that if we have to raise taxes to fund it, we will. And so I was very supportive of breakfast at $8 million. There was a good case made that a lot of children, especially in lower-income homes, do not get a healthy breakfast in the morning, and $8 million, to me, was, we can find $8 million to save 29 million, and we don't really even know if it's 29, it could be more, it could be less, hopefully. But, so it passed, and so that's going to be enacted this coming year. So I don't know the mechanics of how they're going to work it out. The Department of Education will work with the superintendents and principals to plan it out, but there was some data that showed that there are students that were already receiving free and reduced lunch. There was some stigmatism around that and that they felt bullied and belittled and so on. And so they feel like taking, as I heard many times, taking the cash register out of the cafeteria, all kids, no child should now know if someone is struggling financially with the family and if they need free lunch and breakfast. So I like the intent of the bill. I don't like that it's an unfunded mandate going forward. I think there's healthy debate whether or not that 29 million could have been used for other purposes, but that's sort of behind us now, this is law, the governor has signed it. Hunger Free Vermont was the nonprofit that was really championing this bill, and so the good news is, all students will be able to eat breakfast and lunch, no questions asked. The bad news is, we don't know how to pay for it after next year. So that was a big one. And so, any questions on that?
Do you know what the numbers would be for just lunch?
Well, I think it was $8 million for breakfast, so I'd say $21 million.
Okay.
The only other, I guess, neat little piece about the bill, which is, there is a percentage, I can't remember off the top of my head now, but there is a percentage of all of the meals in Vermont schools have to come from Vermont farmers. So that money, some of it will be reinvested back into our farms and agriculture, which is neat, to help our, you know, our struggling farmers, whether it be dairy or vegetable, but, you know, and I hope as much of it stays local as possible. Good questions? All right, I just took that note about PCBs. We talked about that a lot in the Senate. Like I said, I wanted to use more money for PCB testing because I think we, we know that many of our schools, not Rutland Town, but many of our schools statewide, are going to get in trouble with PCBs being in the buildings. You look at what happened to Burlington, where those students, those Burlington High School students are now taking classes out of, you know, a Macy's that closed in downtown Burlington. And now, to the tune of $200 million, they're getting a new high school. There was a lot of debate on PCBs because we don't have enough money, say five schools like Burlington test positive for PCBs, but we don't have a billion extra dollars sitting around to build five new high schools. I readily agree with that. But my argument was that I would rather know, and I think the parents have a right to know if there are PCBs in the school, rather than us sort of just, you know, going along and, well, we might, we might not. I sort of, I use the quote that, you know, right now our kids could sort of be sitting in these schools marinating in the stuff and not knowing. I'd rather let the parents know and then let's figure out how to mitigate the problem if there is one. So $28 million for that. The Department of Education is going to partner with a few other agencies to start a testing program over the next three years to see roughly the 400 schools that are in Vermont, what we're up against, so. All right, that was PCBs, fun stuff. S, I'm sorry, H-716 is another miscellaneous education bill. Did I hand out H-716? I didn't give a copy for myself. That one, Tim, can I have a picture? This bill is really sort of special to me. This one was, there's a section in this that was my sort of baby that I'm really proud of that we got through, without some, with some controversy, unfortunately. But this bill is, talks about, it has a lot of sort of boring sausage-making stuff in this bill, but it does talk about, which we heard a lot from special educators, about the new 2360 rule series to do with delaying the new enactment of some of the special education procedures and testing. So we heard from parents with children that were, that had different needs, they wanted us to immediately enact some of the special education rules, and I'm sure Chris knows way more about this than I do, but we heard from, so all these parents wanted us to enact this come this year, and then we were hearing from supervisor unions from the Canadian border to Massachusetts and everywhere in between, schools aren't ready to implement it yet, special educators are stressed out to the max, they're not trained enough in it, and I probably, not exaggerating, probably had 250 emails over a two-week period from both teachers and parents, and it was really tough to sit there and say, you know, what's best? Do we want to do a little more planning and preparation, or do we want these kids to get these services sooner? And so the legislature, the way this bill passed and the governor signed, there is a partial delay to allow schools more time to plan for the future of these special education rules that were so hotly discussed. So that was that. On page four of H-716, there's a section about Holocaust education, and this was a bill that I introduced. I was approached last summer, just last summer, yeah, last summer, I guess, by a UVM student who is Jewish. She attended Rutland High School, and she approached myself and a few other legislators in the area about introducing a bill to, it basically said that all graduating seniors from Rutland, or from Vermont High Schools would be required to take some type of Holocaust education before they graduated as a requirement. Well, the way the bill reads now and has passed into law, the best that we could get was on or before January 15th of 2023, the Agency of Education is going to now submit a report to the Senate and House on the status of Holocaust education. The, put it nicely, the NEA was extremely against my bill. They felt that I was overstepping my bounds tremendously as a legislator by trying to implement what teachers taught in the classroom. And I was absolutely just dumbfounded by the pushback that I received from not only the NEA, but from some teachers, specifically high school history teachers I heard from, who were all, couldn't believe that I was trying, and, you know, I was never coming from a place of trying to tell teachers how to teach. I'm not a teacher, that's their craft, and they do a fantastic job of it. But I felt that with, we know antisemitism is on the rise in this country, we know that we're getting further away from World War II and the Holocaust and as another generation rises up, and so on and so forth. So what's interesting is this was a tripartisan-supported bill with 16 of the 30 senators signing on as co-sponsors. The significance of that is over a half of the Senate, before the bill was even studied or voted on on a committee, supported the bill from the most conservative Republican to the most liberal progressive and everyone in between, there was a tremendous amount of support from legislators. The NEA and some teachers really didn't like this bill. And as I stated so eloquently, you know, I'm not trying to tell the phys ed teacher to teach soccer versus basketball. We feel like this is literally critically important to the developing minds of high schoolers, talk about how 6 million Jewish believers died in gas chambers and so on. And so the best we could get was a study. I hope that the study comes back and says, hey, you know, we know that not every high school is teaching, there's inconsistencies. We heard from a lot that say, hey, yeah, we are in world history, we're talking about World War II and genocide, hey, and that's great, but we did hear from schools that said, we actually, we're not talking about it. And so I hope that the next legislative body continues the good work of this bill and that someday it is a requirement of graduation from high school. So that is H-716. Can I answer any questions on that?
No, I want to thank you for that, though, personally. I get very upset when I hear from our graduates, either high school or college, that don't believe that ever happened because we never talk about it.
Yeah.
So, and you know what they say about history, if we don't learn from it, we're going to repeat it.
I think you're right, and I think we're seeing that some in Ukraine right now. I think we're seeing, you know, some mimicking of World War II. I also, some of the data that we were given showed that 29% of high schoolers graduating from Vermont High Schools could not name one concentration camp, and 6% of graduating Vermont High Schoolers believe that Jewish believers started World War II. And so when you hear those statistics, that strengthened my belief that we needed to have this bill. But when there's 180 personalities under the golden dome and a lot of outside influences, you don't always get one. And so this is the best we could get, I'm pleased that it's at least going to be talked about next legislative session again, so.
Again, thank you for help, or for trying anyways. Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So last but not least, and maybe the most important thing we talked about tonight is this document that says S-287 at the top, okay? This bill is the pupil waiting study that passed. I am not an expert on this bill, although it's an education-based bill. This was done over a one-year period with eight legislators, four in the Senate, four in the House, who met all last summer and fall, put tremendous hours in trying to understand the 168-page pupil waiting study report that the UVM issued. It would take us a lifetime to fully comprehend, in my opinion, what the bill does. Senator Ruth Hardy from Addison County chaired that committee. I think she did a fantastic job of trying to educate senators and House members as to what the bill did. This is actually an email that I printed off that she sent to us in March as senators to help educate and break down the sections of it, and so that's for your reading pleasure and your time. I guess the bad news for Rutland Town is taxes are going up, education taxes are going up. On page three or four of this documentation, I, it's very, very small print, I tried to make it bigger, but I couldn't seem to get it any bigger, but you see Rutland City and Rutland Town, I put a little check next to it. Over a five-year period, the best estimates right now are that our education expenses or taxes are going to go up a little over 10% over the next five years because of the implementation of the new pupil waiting study. Coincidentally, Rutland City is going to go down a little over 9%. So whereas the city, it's no secret that taxes are, I think it's a generalized statement, but taxes are higher in the city than they are in the town of Rutland. They are going to see some tax relief from education funding. We are going to have to pay more. And so it was a tremendous formula that went into this. There's different weights based on people, English language learners, there's a, talks about a five-year phase-in, so the good news is, if there's a good news here for Rutland Town, that that 10% is going to hit in all one year. It's going to be a five-year phase-in, so it rolls slowly so taxpayers aren't shocked next, let's see when, come July, the first tax bills go out in the fall, they're not going to be shocked with a 10% increase, let alone whatever increase passed in March from the school side and the municipal side, right? So that's the pupil waiting study. I would take questions on it, but I'm, you know, I'm probably going to have to research to find you the answers, to be honest. It wasn't in my wheelhouse, I wasn't on the committee, and so, you know, it's interesting, you know, I, myself, Senator Hooker and Senator Callmore represent 27 towns and cities, and, you know, we had the breakdown, and it was almost across the board, 15 or 14 or 15 towns' taxes were going down, 14 or 15 towns' taxes were going up with this pupil waiting study. And there was no way to sort of, you know, we certainly, myself, especially myself and Senator Callmore, certainly put another two cents based off of Rutland Town because Rutland Town is affected, probably, the 10% rate increase is probably in the top 10 or 15 school districts in the state. I hate to report that. I think everyone, all those who were around for Act 60 in Rutland Town know what I see when that there, but we know what that did to taxes, and so I think they're trying to make, they're trying to build off of Act 60 and make things as they see it more equitable for student learning and schools that need more funding and so on based off of these criterias. But Rutland Town certainly is not, in my opinion, financially, we're certainly financially hurting through the pupil waiting study.
Did they change that study at all as far as, and of course, even back then, we were a district of three towns.
Yeah.
The other two having higher, lower-income families, et cetera. But that was back when if you wanted your children to eat, you put in for free and reduced lunch. you put in for free a reduced lunch. Has that been adjusted? Because, because everybody's been getting free food for two and a half, three years now. There is no impetus for them to fill that form out anymore.
Right.
And I know we've been having a horrible time in the town getting people to do this. How, how's the state going to force families to do this? Because in the town, we have a lot more than that is showing on the books.
Sure.
Yes, substantially more.
And so therefore, it always looks like we do not have a lot of percentage. I mean, I remember Josh, back at 60, we had maybe 1 or 2%, you know? And you didn't have to fill out a paper. Everybody knew. But now it's at the point, especially with these stupid hotels, that, you know, so not only are we offering free food for these families through different programs, we have to deliver it to them. I mean, the cost alone, okay? And so I don't know, I know through the state, when you file your income tax, must they say what town you're in? Through those same reports, they know actually who is lower income. It's just, it's antiquated to think they're going to fill out this form when from now on, it's always going to be free.
I think it's a really fair question. I don't know the answer to it. I took the note and I'll email it to you. I will call Senator Hardy and ask her because she'll know if anyone knows. This, I didn't, thankfully for your copier machine and your school budget, I didn't print the 168 pages times seven.
No, 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 no.
But I mean, it's in there somewhere, but I will unpack it and figure out the answer and get back to you.
You know, when you have a whole formula and that is the biggest basis, you really have to figure out how to make that accurate.
Yeah.
And I think.
I agree.
Back when Act 60 went through, yes, we were a gold town because the taxes from our developments, our businesses, went to the school. Once we had to start sharing them, you know what's happened since Act 60. I personally don't care if anybody builds in the town. I really don't because it's just going to be more money we're going to send away. And that's a terrible thing and I hate to have to feel that way, but living through it. And now, like I said, there is no way for us to get an accurate count of those families that are impacted. Thus Rutland Town is kind of feeling it on both ends.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, my, and I've taken more than 10 minutes as I was allotted on the agenda, but.
Don't worry about that.
My takeaway from this is the five of you do a fantastic job. But unlike, and I've served on both boards, this and the select board, your budget before you even get into it to start to create is 85% built rate for you based off of the money you need to raise for the state, your teacher obligations in terms of the contracts, health insurance increases and so on. So you have 15% to play with really in your budgets, right? So you can decide this year whether or not you're going to paint the bathrooms. So we have enough money for that, right? Or we're going to do this. On the municipal side, there's a lot more leeway. You start from scratch and you build your, your, your $3 or $4 million budget. So I bring that up only because your hands are tied in so many ways on a school board when you create your budgets. But just knowing back your mind, taxes are going up from the pupil waiting study. Taxes are probably going up in another year because of the universal meals and whatever else comes down the pipe. A lot of good intent, I've learned, comes out of Montpelier. There's a lot of good intent, but we don't always think about how we're going to pay for it. And so we know that we have, and we know the economy right now. I just, as I was coming over, I heard on the radio, we've, you know, the stock market has slipped into a bull market. We know what gas prices are. We know what, you know, inflation. It's going to be really tough over the next year or two. So I think we have to all do our jobs and be as cognizant as possible when we do the next budget on the municipal or school side. So.
Thank you. I got a lot of questions, but none you can answer.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
All right.
The T is up to date. I really appreciate it, Josh.
Appreciate it. Good to see everyone.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh. It's not as bad as you thought it was going to be, is it?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't worried. You've got the better Karen Zini, though. I'll tell you that.
Oh, that's on camera.
See you later.
Take care.
Thanks, Josh.
Moving on, the old business recap of the school tour and listening hour. Thank you very much for the tour to both Sarah and Kelly. It was very informative. It was nice to see the extra space upstairs, the potential that's possibly there. We had a few teachers visit, so thank you to those that came by to say hello. Sounds like mostly everything seems to be going well. There were some, I think, just thoughts about the scheduling and, you know, I guess different aspects of it that were positive and some that were places to maybe look at changing for next time. But overall, it sounds like everyone's in a pretty good place. So that was really good.
And thank you, Claire. I apologize. Yeah, it's been a zoo at my business. So I couldn't get away. Yeah, and the FBI now is also on my back, so I apologize for your work. For my work, yeah. Not for you, just to clarify. I keep going on permanent vacation. No, for my work, yes. But no, so I couldn't get away. I'm part-time at 45 hours a week.
Jeff, Billy, Tim, did you have anything to add from?
No, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to tour. I was late for the tour. I was there for part of the teachers' listening session. I found it like really helpful. I think the teachers appreciated like seeing us there too.
Yeah, I think they definitely were, seemed excited for us to be there, you know? And knowing that we're open to communicate and support.
Are you still planning on meeting in the fall? In the fall? So we can meet the new teachers or?
And have a bigger group because it was hard being tucked away on the side. Some teachers were busy. The middle school didn't have a break until we only had 15 minutes left. And we also realized that we were taking over their lunchtime too. So I think having something outside of school and meeting new teachers would be really helpful in the fall. So we'll plan that at the office meeting.
Good. Awesome.
The elevator update. I don't see Louis here. I was curious if.
So the last GRC issue where you notified that Louis would not be attending.
Correct. So is there any information?
No, I don't have it right now.
So I will follow up with Louis. We were just curious when we were touring the site, where we were and when we could get bids and kind of get things moving.
Did Kelly share any of that with you?
He said he wasn't sure what exactly the.
Process.
Process was. I thought he could get bids and then once, once we got the bond, then we can move forward. He thought Louis said the opposite, that you had to wait for the bond before you get the bids.
I can follow Louis and Kelly.
That would be awesome. And then the other thing that we noticed was that there was no safety, like fire, fire stuff upstairs.
Extinguishers.
Extinguishers, sprinklers. There's nothing set up.
Yep.
But we do have storage there.
Yes.
So that should be maybe something we can look into, information.
Yeah, we knew that, that storage that's up there, there's no sprinklers or.
The fire marshal should reach out to the fire marshal, have them take a tour and then have them make recommendations during what's necessary enough.
Yeah, we were all thinking that that would be probably important because there is some information.
That the space is not being occupied, there are different regulations in a space that is being occupied. So the fire marshal would be the best person to reach out to.
And we've got, we've got SU stuff up there, correct, also?
Yes, that's the cage that Kelly built.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
And Greg has said he'd give us an update today on the equipment for the library if we received it or not. Does anybody know that?
I've got here, I know there's a delay in equipments. There's a lot of the buildings as well, so.
No, he had ordered the equipment for the library so that we could hold meetings there.
Right, but I don't think it's ready to go yet, no.
Okay, so.
He'll let us know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know he was ordering it.
I know he's just trying to get through the interview right now. And then once we get through the interview, then he'll start working on items like that, so.
We talked about doing that in the fall.
We talked about moving in, but he's just said he'd give us an update if he was able to order it and.
I think he may have already, I think he may have ordered it, but.
Just a status update, yeah.
Yeah, because we didn't want to sit there with someone in the heat. Rather be here and use his air conditioning.
So team, in the future, if you want sas, please email me and I'll make sure these are ready to go for you.
Okay.
Okay, just a, so not a word, a lot of sas updates. Thanks.
Next up is new business. Al, are you ready for your annual snapshot presentation?
I'm ready.
Are we?
Not sure if you will be. So I do, I do apologize. I knew you were expecting an S back discussion only. I'm just going to stand here slightly.
I'm going to move back there, so I'm not right in front of you. How about that? I've already looked at this with you anyway, so.
Just don't want to smile through the whole presentation.
So what we are going to be showing you guys is the annual snapshot, which the S back does factor into the academic side of it. But that's only a small piece of the annual snapshot overall. The annual snapshot touches on a number of things. And it is the state's way of measuring school performance across the board. They waited to release the annual snapshot until the 2021 S back data was ready in their minds. They released both at the same time. And I'll take you through what the annual snapshot shows us real quick. I say real quick. It's a longer presentation than I've given you guys before, so bear with me. What the snapshot tells us is how we're performing in each of these five different areas. So we're looking at academic proficiency. Personalization really applies mostly to secondary schools. So the high schools is where the focus of that is. So we won't see a whole lot of data in terms of personalized pathways for students or anything like that. Safe and healthy schools, high-quality staffing, and our investment priorities. Those are the five areas that they measure us on.
Next up.
Okay. So the things that go into that, for academic proficiency, especially at the elementary level, we look primarily at ALA math and science scores. So that's your S back and your Vermont Science Assessment. When we get into high school, we're looking at graduation rate, college and career readiness, and outcomes within 16 months of graduation from high school in terms of college and career readiness. For personalization, we're looking at student participation and flexible pathways. That's usually measured in terms of early college, that sort of thing. The school offerings on flexible pathways, how many different programs a school offers a student. Safe and healthy schools is limited to primarily a single measurement, and that's disciplinary exclusion. So suspensions and school suspensions, anything where a student might be denied classroom time. For the high-quality staffing measurement, we're looking at the number of properly licensed teachers and then our education, our educator retention rate in terms of principals and teachers. The investment opportunities, that boils down to staffing ratios in the five categories listed there, teachers, principals, school counselors, librarians, and nurses. Having said all that, there are four key metrics that we're looking at. Two of them are going to play a significant role in the report tonight, and that is our current performance and our current equity index. And the reason that the changes don't factor in, I'll get to in a minute. When we're looking at the different categories, the state came up with what they thought were some very simple ways to show us performance. We've got a four, a four-level rating scale where we're not beating, approaching, meeting, or exceeding, very much like what we see in a proficiency-based report card that we give to students. That's how the schools are measured by the state. And then under change, you would see these arrows pointed in different directions for declining, not improving, improving, or excelling. When the state released their information for this year's snapshot, they sent out a two-page memo to go with it. I tried to summarize that in these bullet points on one slide so you don't have to read through the whole thing. Things they want us to consider are that there was an abrupt change to education in March of 2020 where we shut everything down and we went remote. We were then for that year exempted from our reporting requirements. So 2020, we don't have an S back score to look at. We have to rely on our internal measurements. Varied learning experience occurred during the 2021 school year as well. So assessments were administered in person. In other words, we had to take our students who may have been learning remotely, bring them into the building to give them the S back assessment, which is not what they were used to. So they feel that there were a lot, some factors introduced by that action that would negatively impacted the S back scores. Their next point is due to the impact of several novel variables. We cannot compare the 2021 results to the prior year's data. So the 2019 school year and the 2021 school year, they don't want us to compare at all, mostly because of these, because of COVID, we'll be honest. Their next point was we don't understand the effects of COVID on graduation rates, career readiness, flexible pathways, discipline, educator licensing and retention, and staffing ratios. You know, COVID and the effects of it has had an effect not only on students, but on the teachers and other staff as well. And they're still, really what it boils down to is they're still trying to figure out what it all means, just like the rest of us are. The last point is that in 2021, 2022, so for this school year, a number of those same factors are still in place, right? We've had a number of classes that had to go out on quarantine for a week or two at a time. They've missed instruction. Staff members had to go out. They missed the ability to teach. And again, we don't know what the impact of that should be. We expect it to be negative.
Al, can I ask you a question? I mean, we've gone from 2019, now we're looking at 22. And even next year, according to the presentation, we're not going to really be able to compare next year either. So there's three or four years where we've taken these tests, but we can't rely on anything. So why are we continuing to take these tests until it's ready?
Well, so there's a break between the 2019 and 2021 data. This snapshot is based on the 21 data. We know that for all intents and purposes, education was normal up until 2019, if I can use.
Right. No, that's true. Yeah.
2020 was a break. We didn't do an assessment. In 2021, we took an assessment that had all of those things factored in. In 2022, we're going to take this, we have taken the same assessment. It's going to have those same factors built in. We've spent an awful lot of time as an SU trying to prepare a recovery plan.
Right.
So the reason for taking that test is that we look at 2021 again as a new baseline year. And then we take those tests to measure our success at reaching our recovery goals.
Okay, great. Recovery is a great word. Okay.
So this is the annual snapshot for Rutland Town specifically. And this first page is the overview page. When you go, if you were to go to the AOE website, you can look at this page and you can drill down. When you click on each of these, you can drill down into the data just a little bit further. We'll show you the whole report as we go. But overall, we can see in Rutland Town, under academic proficiency, we're meeting the standard. For safe and healthy schools, we're exceeding. For high-quality staffing, we're exceeding. And under our investment priorities, we're approaching. The only two elements that we have changed data for are the high-quality staffing and the investment priorities, mostly because personalization doesn't apply. And again, they don't want us comparing the 2019 to 2021 data. So there's no change. Mostly because personalization doesn't apply, and again, they don't want us comparing the 2019 to 2021 data, so there's no change data to report.
Why didn't we do it anyways, even though we know that it was going to be different? I mean, we had a big loss in there. I mean, to be able actually to chart, 19, we were doing pretty good. Everything's going great. We were improving in science and math. And now it's almost like, okay, we're coming back from COVID. Now we're gonna test you again. Well, you know that there's been decreases.
Well, I mean, you could conceivably compare those results, but what you're comparing is a normal school year where all all of your students are attending regular classes. There's no disruption in the middle, and they're taking the test.
Right.
Now we're gonna look at 2021, where we've had students homeschooling, we've had students in the classroom, we've had students in and out of the school. Some were sick, some were not.
Right.
So because of the disruption, it changes, it changes the elements of the test.
I understand that. My only thing is that.
It just means we're resetting and we're calling 2021 a base.
But I'm just, I'm, myself, I'm interested in knowing, in 19, when everything was normal, this is how we were progressing and everything else, then we had the mess in the middle, and now we tested again. I'm interested to see how much ground, how much recovery we have to make just to get back to 19. So that was my interest in that data, personally. You know, this, I don't know, if you were just to open up the computer and look to see what Rutland Town looks like, um, you may be happy, you may, oh, no, math is really bad. But there's no history there, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, yes and no. This.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, really.
The state of Vermont just doesn't want us to make that comparison.
Right.
So with this report, that comparison's not made. That doesn't, having said that, that doesn't prevent anybody from going to the AOE website and pulling up the past data and making the comparison anyway. And from our standpoint as an SU, when we get together, we do look at the past data and we do look at the current data. And we discuss it, and we factor that into the recovery plans that we've submitted to the state. It's not that we don't look.
No, I know. I understand. I just wanna make sure that they understand, so.
How'd you tell me that could be?
Did I talk about the, okay. Sorry, I lost my.
Sorry, my fault.
No, it's okay. Questions are good. I'd rather have them than not. Need you paying attention. Uh, so for the equity index under academics, the overall score shows us is not meeting in terms of equity, and in safe and healthy schools, it shows us is not meeting. And that's a measure of disparity between historically marginalized groups versus not marginalized groups. Overall, I believe that has to do with economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged in this particular case, the way this slide is set up. So if we drill down into the academic piece, what we can see here is that in terms of weighting, we're about 44% ELA, 44% math. I think that's 13% science roughly. So in terms of how that plays out, for ELA, we're meeting. For math, we're approaching, and for science, we're meeting. And again, in the equity index column, we're not meeting on any of those tests.
I'm sorry, Al, does the S back go into this snapshot or not?
So the S back data is what's factored in here for the ELA.
So this does include the.
This is S back. It's, that performance is solely based on S back. And then the science score is the Vermont Science Assessment.
So when it says 15% of them mean, what does that really mean?
So they take a look at the science, say the science score. You would add together all, I'm tripping over my words.
This is hard to.
What you would do is you would add together all of the scores to come up with an overall score. When you blend three different tests together, you take your ELA measurement, multiply it by 50%. In this case, what is that, 44%? You take your math score, you multiply that by 44%, and then you take your science score, you multiply that by, is it 13 or 15? 15%. And then you add those together to come up with a whole score. Does that answer the question? It gets a little dicey when you're looking through it, but.
I don't like the people waiting.
Yeah, it's a wait. You know, it'd be like you, you had a, in, in terms of the way we used to grade, if you had exams at 80%, you might have a score of 100%, but you take an 80 and add that into your overall score. And then some other factor might add 10%. So if you had 100, you take that 10 and add it into the score. That's what they've done there. It's just a wait. So if you drill down one more time, so specifically into the ELA, this is where they start to compare the school to the state average. We can see that Rutland Town overall, and in terms of scale, is meeting their expectation. The state of Vermont is meeting the expectation. With, in terms of the equity index, we're not meeting the expectation. The state of Vermont is not meeting the expectation. So we're in line with the state of Vermont in terms of all of those measurements, is really what that's saying. I think the next slide shows math. Again, we're approaching here, but the state of Vermont is not meeting. And again, for the equity index, we're not meeting, and the state of Vermont is not meeting. So in terms of current performance, we're actually doing a little better than the state of Vermont in math. For science, again, we're, in Rutland Town, we're meeting. Vermont is meeting. The equity index, that sounds like a broken record. Neither Rutland Town or the state of Vermont are meeting. And did I drill that down? No, no. Move on to safe and healthy schools. In terms of safe and healthy schools, overall, we're excelling. You can see the weight of this. It's all 100% based on disciplinary exclusion. Performance-wise, we're exceeding, which means we have very little disciplinary exclusion.
Where does that data come from?
That comes from the state reporting that we do. All of our behavior incidents are added together into our student information system, and at the end of the year, we compile a bunch of data that we sent to the state. So all of our, there are requirements on what types of behavior infractions they want to see, whether they're, we're required to show suspensions and various other data where we we might perform some disciplinary measure. And it's, it's reported from us to the state.
A lot of it is around suspension, expulsion, and incidents of HHP written public times, but does that take into account data, data disciplinary?
Right. So, I mean, but it doesn't narrow, I mean, that is, and I won't get into that now. Thanks.
All right. So taking it one level deeper into the report, Rutland Town is exceeding, Vermont is exceeding. The equity index, neither Rutland Town nor the state of Vermont are meeting. High-quality staffing. So this is a 50-50 split between properly licensed teachers and educator retention. Overall, we're exceeding but declining in the change index. For educator retention, again, we're exceeding and we're not improving. And I think we take a deeper dive into each of those as well. Properly licensed teachers. Rutland Town is exceeding, the state of Vermont is exceeding. In Rutland Town, we're declining slightly. We have a, I think, a minus 4% change. The state of Vermont is improving with a steady, I think a 2% change. Educator retention, again, we're exceeding, the state of Vermont is exceeding. We're not improving, and the state of Vermont is not improving. Moving on to the investment opportunities, which is really a measure of staffing ratios. There are a number of them to go through. Try to get through as quickly as I can. Overall, we're approaching and declining in terms of performance. And as we dive into that, teachers make up 50% of this indicator. So overall, Rutland Town is approaching, the state of Vermont is exceeding. At the elementary school, we're meeting and the state of Vermont is meeting. It's in the secondary grades where we're approaching and the state of Vermont is exceeding. Overall, in Rutland Town, we're declining. The state of Vermont is mixed, where they're not improving under the overall. We're excelling in the elementary, but they're declining in the secondary. In terms of staff, teacher staffing. For school counselors, Rutland Town is exceeding. The state of Vermont overall is exceeding. At the elementary level, they're only meeting, and we're exceeding again.
Can I ask a question? You guys, you talked about elementary and then secondary, but our school, only 78th grade, a secondary, but I mean, I just wondered how that is segmented in our debt.
The, the only reason you have a point there is because of the seventh grade.
Okay, so when you're talking about secondary, you're talking about 78th grade factoring into that, whereas everybody else is in the elementary. Okay, thank you. I'm just, sorry.
I'm sorry. No, it's all right. We can just see in the performance change, Rutland Town is improving, and the state of Vermont is declining for school counselors. Uh, for school librarians, Rutland Town is approaching, the state of Vermont is approaching. Rutland Town is not improving, the state of Vermont is not improving. For nurses, we're meeting, the state of Vermont is not meeting. There is a shortage of nursing staff. Rutland Town is not improving, the state of Vermont is declining. I think nurses was the last category. I believe that is the bottom line, the end of the report. So having said all that, are there any questions? Not to belabor the point.
How long has this been the pool of choice? Like, five years, 10 years, 20 years? This whole?
The annual snapshot?
Yeah.
It's been around five or six years, I think.
I was gonna say it's right around five.
Yeah. It was under development before that, and there was an awful lot of debate over how to put this whole snapshot together. And this is the end result in it.
Is it a a moving document, or is this like?
It has to be, yeah, because of the various factors that go into it. As state legislation changes, the measures have to change to, to fit that. And overall, this is part of a requirement to meet federal education legislation as well. So we have to have something to make public. And this is what the AOE came up with.
Is this, oh, sorry.
Not to sound condescending, but I wonder if their performance is determined with the same sort of snapshot, you know, if someone sits down with them and says, hey, we're gonna go through this and, cause, I mean, this is hard to digest and, and know. I just don't know how to measure, you know?
It is a fairly, it looks simple on the surface, especially if you just stop at that overview page. But there's a lot of stuff that goes into it, and there are a lot of things buried in it, like the S back numbers, as an example. You know, you would never know that to see that front page. And the staffing ratios. When you actually start to take apart that staffing ratios information, there's a 27-page document that has nothing but table after table of numbers in it that go into scoring this.
We, as a staff, as a school community, you deliver all that information to them. That's, how, how's all this information compiled, I guess?
Most of this information, like the S back, the science assessment, we take the assessment and they, they pull that from the the reporting agency that handles the test. A number of those other things, the staffing information, the the school suspension information, teacher retention, properly licensed teachers, that's all stuff that we supply the state as part of our state reporting. The kinds of things that drive milk crazy and he pulls all this air out of it.
Yeah.
So is this snapshot what they use when they're looking at for their continuous improvement plan? Do they take that into account? Is that part of it, or is it, does it come out too late?
When we, as a community of schools here, put together our continuous improvement plans, we draw on data ourselves. I don't wait for the state's snapshot. I don't think any of our principals wait for the state's snapshot. Because we have to turn it in. In this case, that information came out so late, we would never have had the information to report.
Well, it's also not current. It's not our S back data from this year.
So it's a, it's a, I'm just trying to understand this. So, so this is a, a required thing, right? And it takes a lot of time for the teachers and the students and all that. But the process is sort of clunky where we can't, I mean.
Yeah, well, yes and no. So if we're talking specifically about the academic performance data, mostly other data, we're reporting to the state ourselves.
Yeah.
And it's data we have. The S back data, like the 2022 S back window has closed, so the testing was done already. I can't share that data in a public forum, but I can pull that data and share it with a school principal. So I believe.
So Al, you already have that, even though our kids just finished it?
I have the 2022 S back data. And I am working on the reports to share with the administrators.
That's the soonest I've ever heard of it coming out.
Well, coming out is relative, right? It's embargo, which means it can't be publicly reported. They just barely released the 2021 S back data in May this year, which is honestly the latest I've ever heard of it being released. But the release date varies depending on what the state is doing with the data and how they want to look at it. Like this year, the 2021 data, they spent so much time going over what they thought the effects of COVID were, how they wanted to look at the data, what they thought affected the data. That's why it took them so long to release it. That's why this particular report is so late coming to you guys, though, because I can now finally share it publicly. The 2022 data, I can't share publicly. But I can talk to, say, Eric and Sarah about it. I can share it with teachers at the school. It just can't go outside of the building.
So we could, okay, so the school, okay. I can take that literally or not. So in executive session, we could look at the 21, 22, the board?
No.
Not yet.
If we held our meeting in the building, couldn't we?
It's embargoed.
It's, it's embargoed.
Okay. But that is actually information we need. Because when we find out a year later.
So this is where boards have to trust, superintendents, building administrators, as they look at this information to begin building out new improvement plans that are based on this, because it's been that as we have these plans, that we have looked at this information, we have moved forward. The S back is one piece of data. And I know that, I'm not giving a lot of attention, but the S back is a ranking. And I know that, I'm not giving a lot of attention, but the Sback is a ranking of our students on that day. And so it's not a true indicator of where we're at, so we can, you know, have an overinflated sense of, hey, we're far wrong than we really are, or we can really beat ourselves up over it and say, wow, we're doing horribly. I think one of the things I've talked about, about this, talking to Lisa and the administrators, is we need to build some stronger accountability measures for our schools, which we can control over, and we're not just waiting on, like, Sback or things along these lines. And so it's, which we talk about, because you are right that by the time, like you said, May, it's, in theory, you can look for a classroom teacher's perspective, when, you know, they should have this information prior to, you know, being dismissed for the summer, so they can really look at, you know, their kids coming into the next fall, where they're at, how they can make some adjustments. It doesn't work that way, because they're trying to mess with the figures, and so it really is, it's off-putting, it's frustrating, but I think that's where, as we look at this, we're also understanding where we're at, where we need to go, and-
Right, and it's the where we need to go that concerns me, as far as the school board goes, because budgeting or whatever, we need to know that, and it always seems like we're running behind.
Well, again, I think the system and the way this setup has us chasing, it's a more reactive approach as opposed to proactive, but, you know, it's just, it's, you know, it's like, it's almost like performing triage as opposed to, or, I'm sorry, an autopsy as opposed to triage.
Right.
And so we have to really look at this, which we talked, discussed with the state. I know Kevin Doring, who works for the state, I've had many conversations over the years about this information being great to be more timely if we could, could release this, and, you know, if classroom teachers want to have this information, they could take a look at, you know, during the summer and really start prepping for this. We talked about differentiation, you know, most best for kids, really, if they said it's embargoed, that's frustrating, but it sits there, sits there, and then they eventually release it to, you know, to the public. But there are, like I said, a lot of data discussions that are taking place beyond the scenes in terms of looking at where we're at and what the next steps are. So when you see these continuous improvement plans, it'd be school-based, or, you know, in this case, it would be school-based, district-based, the same thing. It is based upon, you know, Sback and MAP and, you know, classroom assessments and other things that's, kind of how we move our students along, so.
I don't think it's a trust thing, because I think you know we trust you.
I understand you're saying, I think, right. I didn't mean like, you know, that distrusting, but-
Well, it's just the whole system itself, and you can go as far as legislative. Okay, we passed a budget in March, but here it is June, and we're just finding out the repercussions of the money part of it. Kind of late when we're already ahead and have the budget set, and you already know in your mind, you're gonna run a deficit, there's no way you can't. It's just, seems like a broken system that's never worked on to fix.
Yeah, and it's not just here. I think I've worked in three different states, and I think we've had the same level of frustration in all three of those states. You know, the fact that we're just not getting timely information, and it is more reactive. I think one of the things we like about MAP, MAP testing, is the fact that it does give us more timely information, does measure growth with the course of the year. Since for all Sback might give you a snapshot of the students on that particular date, while MAP, really, you take a look at how far the kids have come over the course of the year. So let's say in a classroom, a teacher like us, you may look at, say, seventh grade Sback score and say, our kids aren't, they're not doing well at all. But when you look at, say, MAP, and they've come, you know, say, three or four grade levels, you know, those teachers did a phenomenal job over the course of the year, but we're just looking at where they ended up as opposed to where they began. I think that's, so there's a lot of different things, you know, to take into consideration, but-
Should we be, should we consider mapping the maps instead of waiting for everything to come out?
Well, I think we, I think we, this is the first year that we have MAP data, you know, full year, and I think it's still the same, you know, I guess, bullet points that we provided. We do understand that's, you know, that is a assessment of administration on a day, and there are a lot of factors in that, especially once, you have an opportunity to really take a look at the growth, and I think it's something we should move forward next year, that we are going to provide a more timely report on MAP in terms of where we're at. I think it's, you know, I know March, you're gonna talk more about this than Sarah and Eric, but from building base, they will be looking on, you know, I'm sorry, I broke the fourth wall, actually. But I think it's one, but I think we are looking at more in terms of that information that when a classroom teacher receives MAP data, they can really take a look at and say, all right, well, what adjustments can be made, you know, for their classroom, for individuals within the classroom, to better meet their needs and really kind of get them to where they need to be at in terms of, you know, growth projections. And so that's kind of where I'm at, so.
Okay.
I mean, there are a lot of things, but that's part of, I think, it's a good discussion for a board, for administrators, classroom teachers, really talk about those accountability measures where, I don't, not throw that Sback away, but I think Sback is not the best way for us to score how well we're doing, how we're not doing. I think there are other kind of, like, whole, if they're tired, really kind of raise that bar a little bit, too.
I mean, I think the whole premise for my, my questions was, you know, we, we're now looking at budgets based on needs, right, and attention to students. You know, Josh said we're short a thousand teachers in the state and limited resources, and so I just want to make sure that we're able to maximize what we do have, and we're not doing things that are just, you know, that we're not getting a good end game out of, but.
Sure.
And so that's why I was asking the questions.
Well, you know, Tim, I think you are right. You want to make sure that the money or the resources you're expending are being utilized for the right reasons, for the right purposes, that you're not just throwing away and, you know, just-
Yeah, and beyond money, I mean, time, you know, time's finite, you know, so that's very important.
It would just be good to have that kind of information when we do a goal setting, when we meet in the summer, to have that information for us, it would help us too, as much as it helps you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on, financial reports. Rose is not here, so I guess we'll just move on to director's orders. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion for approval.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Any against? Passed unanimously. Thank you, Lynette. Next is approval of the minutes.
I'll let you go first, Sharon, changing?
Just some tiny little typos. On page three, where it's in the first paragraph, it says, "And it is a good opportunity for reestablish the board's vision." I think it's just missing the word "to." So it is a good opportunity to reestablish the board's vision.
Mm-hmm.
And then on number four, first line, it just had the incorrect birthday of the parent's daughter. It should be, it should read September 22nd, not August 22nd.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's an important change.
Any other changes? That were noted?
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Thank you, Lynette. And any discussion?
I just want to mention that in July, Sean will not be available two minutes, so the clerk for this board will be responsible for taking minutes.
Another reason.
Another reason we're not gonna meet.
Thank you, Chris.
But even, yeah, so.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Unanimous. Superintendent's report.
Thanks, too. How do you have it?
One for the carousel?
Oh, there is a, sorry, Chris, there is a minutes for the carousel meeting. Any changes there?
I didn't see any.
I did not either. Can I have a motion from the gentleman over there?
I'll make a motion to-
Thank you, Billy.
From the carousel meeting.
Any more further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see, unanimous. Thank you, Billy. Now, Chris, sorry about that.
That's all right. I just have a few items. I know that as you move to the end of the year, it really comes about graduation and getting things buttoned up and start getting ready for the following year, so a lot of the items all lead to Sarah and Eric's. I'll talk about the graduation coming up this week, as well as discussing end-of-year trips and things along those lines. I do, myself and Lisa Madison will be meeting with Sarah, just do end-of-year, you know, goal meetings, while I'll start taking a look at goals, you know, for next year as well, it's kind of a process. And I wanted to put in here just about the summer admin retreat. A lot of times, board members ask, well, what happens, or what does that look like, or what do you do? And so a lot of it is, it's not just, I'd like to say it's fun, but it's really, it's kind of intense, two, three days for us, and where we do cover a lot, we have a lot of things, you know, so it's just, it's, we couldn't get the bouncy houses or the vault at the time, so we had to go with this.
Part of time.
Right, so, but I just wanted to provide a bit of an overview of just some of the things, more for public information, too, when the here and admin retreat, what goes through. We will be talking about, you know, build upon instructional leadership. This year, all the GRCSU administrators went through what's called the University of Washington Center for Educational Leadership, Instructional Leadership Training. So really what it boiled down to is, how do we improve as instructional leaders within our buildings? And so like myself, Lisa Madison, we had our central office directors there as well and all the building admins, and it really was for us. And, you know, we went to classrooms, you know, whether it be here, say, up at Malonee, or in Starksboro, we kind of worked with the cohorts, and it was a good year for us. And Sarah can, you know, tell from her perspective, but we really looked at how to provide more effective feedback to our staff and valuable feedback, and so we didn't avoid using judgmental language, but also, you know, holding each other to a higher set of standards as well as, you know, to our staff. And so, like I said, we went to classrooms, I know it drove some of our teachers probably mad to see, you know, two or three, you know, admins come in, and then there was no feedback given, because it really was about us, and about calibrating to make sure as we walk into a classroom, we're seeing the same things, we're just seeing, you know, Sarah sees something I don't see, or vice versa, and so it was a good year. There's a year or two that we decided not to participate in, partly because of cost, but we are also looking at, I think it's something which through our admin PLCs, we continue doing this work, so we can, you know, continue to improve the level of feedback. I think, you know, one of the things that, as we look at, you know, working with staff to, you know, effective instruction, I think the staff appreciates timely, effective feedback, and we're also looking to shift the eval process for a lot of staffs away from this idea, like it's a hire fire, we go in there for a couple of forums, a couple of walkthroughs. It really is an ongoing discussion upon what good teaching is, and so it's more of a professional collegial conversation that the administrators will have with teachers and just, we're getting setting goals and how the staff are progressing towards goals, so it's a worthwhile process, but it's going to be a lengthy one. So we're going to continue to calibrate this summer, kind of, you know, chart out what year two will look like, and we'll have more updates on that as well. We also are going to be focusing on equity, and when we hear equity, I think the problem that's occurred is, that term has been hijacked a little bit this, over the past year, year and a half, where a lot of people automatically will just, you know, quickly shift or focus on a particular thing or item. When we talk about equity here in the SU of Rutland Town, we're really going, you know, the five things are equal outcomes, fairness, access and support, respect for differences, and achievement of every student. And so that's, so we look at, you know, as we're developing equitable, you know, and equitable education for all of our students, it really is all in these five areas. And so we're talking, you know, this year, we're looking at what that looks like, how that plays out in our schools, and so just, you know, in our classrooms, and really kind of start to, you know, calibrate and looking at what sort of resources we might need to, what sort of professional development or training may do with that as well, so. But that's what we will talk about on a regular basis, because, as I said before, you know, during, over the past year, when you hear equity, it's that people are, have an emotional reaction, sometimes, you know, positive, sometimes negatively, and I think really we are very transparent about this in terms of we're just making sure that all our students feel safe, they feel welcome, that they're getting access to high-quality education, have all the resources and support they need to access that as well, and that that's important for us to do, so we're working through. We have a couple of other things about university design for learning that's really, you know, that kind of differentation, which, you know, MTSS is kind of working together, but the MTSS, you know, you heard Senator Terrence Zieke talk about this, but Act 173, part of the delay was to allow us to really start to take a look at the MTSS systems in our schools, and really what it boils down to is just different tiers of instruction. So all students, you know, regardless of where they're at, should have access to high-quality tier one, you know, instruction. And so that, basically boils down to, it's just, it's good quality, best practice in all classrooms. So all students are entitled to tier one. So really just to make sure, take a look at that they're getting tier one instruction in all their classrooms, you know, tied to instructional leadership. Then as we move through students who are having, you know, difficulties or struggling, then we start to look at, you know, through a formal process, whether it be ESD or referral to a team, we then look at tier two, which is, you know, like you said, maybe an intervention model, or, you know, some other types of supports to a tier three, which is a more intensive, like a one-on-one. So we're looking at, how do we develop this? How do we make this more efficient? And so it's seamless, so as a classroom teacher has gone through, they've done a lot of pre-referral interventions, and they're still maybe struggling with the student or what to do with the students, there is a formal process for us, how to, in a more proactive way, really address the students' needs as opposed to, you know, drag it along and then at the end say, well, you know, we tried our best. It really is in terms of, you know, more streamline the system, so our students will benefit from this. But also be very transparent, you know, so staff know what the steps are as well as administration. And then school safety preparedness, I think that's something which we're always review or revisit. Obviously, with, you know, the recent, you know, school shooting down in Texas has kind of heightened our awareness. I know that, you know, a couple weeks ago, there was, you know, some gunshots in Rutland Town, which, you know, caused some anxiety among the parents, and, you know, which rightfully so. But I think, you know, we're gonna take a look at just, you know, make sure that we're doing everything we're legally supposed to do, but also, you know, how can we, you know, provide more training? I think we've done, we did a couple tabletop exercises with Corey Valley admins, and I think it's something which we're, we're talking about this with the admin team, is bringing this more of a buy, you know, twice a year, here in Rutland Town, they do once the fall, once in the spring, and really they'll start to involve, you know, local first responders. So we'll go through tabletop, which, you know, the Rutland Town Police Department there, like the fire chief, you know, over there, just whatever else, local resources. So as we look at how to respond to a situation that we're kind of all on the same page, so it's not just, if there is a response, the school is ready to go, but then if a first responder comes on, they don't know what to do. So there really is this more of a unified approach through this, so. And also just revising, you know, that's, because Sarah had said in the past, but as we look at the SU, we do have a bit of a disparity in terms of what approaches that are being used. Some will use ALIS, some will use a different approach. I think we're gonna look to do a more unified approach across the SU, whether it be ALIS or something else, and then we're gonna make sure that all staff are trained, because I think it's where, you know, for any staffer on the walk-in, they should have peace of mind that they are prepared for any situation. And I always, we look at, we always look at the extreme, you know, such as a school shooting like in Texas, but really, there's a higher likelihood that we'll have a custodial issue, which may have, you know, angry guardian might come in and, you know, you know, barge into the school, you know, and cause an issue or a problem. Those are more likely to happen, how do we respond to that? And I know that we've had some, you know, a lot of our schools, some, a lot of confrontations at dismissal or drop-off on this, and so I think it's just where we just have to be able to de-escalate this, how to handle this, you know, so there's a lot there, so. But I know that we did receive a lot of feedback from parents after, you know, Texas, and I know that people were asking for a lot of things. I think we just also have to be, understand, just understand in terms of what we can and can't do, that, you know, we, we don't want to, may our schools become a compound, but we also have to make sure that, you know, that our kids, our staff are safe as well, so. And then just, we are looking to shift, just, we talked to the admins already about this, but we're shifting to the professional standards for educational leaders, which is just a little bit different than the ISLECK. It's a more well-rounded approach in terms of just what administrative looks like, and so something from myself all the way down to the building admins, we'll kind of hold ourselves to these standards and set goals off them and do a lot of reflections on these as well, so. So that's where we're at for the admin retreat, so we'll have a post-admin retreat as well.
Thanks. Inspector's report?
Sure, thank you. I think one of the things that we'll start with, we had on the agenda, is Washington, DC, so this year Eric attended, next year I'm up. I can't wait, so it's always a good time, so if you want to share a little bit about DC?
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. I'm trying to convince my wife to let me go next year, she's like, it was a great time. We had 37 kids, 11 chaperones, chaperones did an awesome job. Our first stop is Harwha Cafe, and across the board, staff came up to me again and again and again, like, this was the best school we'd had all year long, and they could not give us enough praise. So that was a great way to- And they could not give us enough praise. So, that was a great way to start the trip. We did the Lincoln Memorial, we did the Korean War, Vietnam War, World War II. All guide tour at nighttime, amazing scenery. It was a lot, very powerful place to be there. Went to a hotel, over the three nights we were there, we had six complaints. I investigated them all, none of us, none of them enrolled our kids. So, I spent more time talking to other kids from other schools, and very, very little time talking to ours. I think we had one kid out of the room at 10:30 at night getting ice for somebody, actually an ice bucket, so we're good to go. Amazing. So, the staff at the hotel were just like, "You guys are great. Thank you so much." Very much pleased with the behavior of the kids. Tour guide, same thing, amazing tour. Bus driver, same thing, "You guys are great. You're awesome." So, all the prep work the teachers did at school all year long paid off. It was just a great trip. The second day, we spent, oh my God, we walked 17,000 steps, if not more. Mountain Vernon, Natural History, Natural History Museum, after American History and Culture Museum, Capitol Building, medieval times, dinner was awesome. So, kids really love that. If you haven't gone, you definitely go. It was well worth it. Day three, kind of tired that day. It was a heavy-hitting day. We had Iwo Jima, Marine Corps Memorial, Arlington. Kids were amazing. They were so super respectful. Impressive, impressively respectful. Did the Holocaust Museum, tough, tough place to be, real tough place to be. After all that, the kids were kind of tired. I think mentally and physically, we ended up having a break in the park. It was one more art museum, and then we ended up early and they had cool time pizza. They were fine, absolutely fine. The last day was at the National Zoo, and that was a favorite for a lot of kiddos. So, a great trip.
That's what I hear. I heard no complaints. It's awesome.
The number of compliments, staff, different places. We had one complaint with the museum, with kids going backwards with an escalator, but an adult was leading them. So, I think we can just like say, "That didn't happen." Always one.
Always, always.
So, yeah, the only complaint we had was led by adults. So, seriously, just, kids did a great job, phenomenal job, all trip long.
I'm so glad that they got to go.
Me too.
Because that's always been the highlight of, you know, eight, nine years in school. It ends with this trip, and of course, not being able to go for the last couple of years. I don't think they really, the kids really understand how great it is until they actually go.
This is true. You hit the nail on the head.
So, we crossed that first bridge, and just seen New York City, and the eyes popped open, and we're in it now. So, it was quite an amazing experience for a lot of the kiddos.
Awesome. Thank you.
Quite an amazing experience.
All right. I have a long principal's report. So, I'll just highlight a few things. I am just so happy to get back to normal and have visitors in the building and have concerts. We finished our MAP assessment. We've done a lot of assessing with kids. We had the NAEP that did fourth grade, S-Back, MAPS. Our kids are tired. It was a lot of testing, test, test, test. So, we wrapped all that up. Again, as Eric said, great time in DC. He does ask for feedback. I've done that every year too. We elicit feedback from kids in chaperones, and we share that with the company. So, that was shared with them already. Kindergarten registration, we had in-person kindergarten registration. So, we project to have about 32 students come in the fall. That doesn't study, which is about average, yeah.
But, we always pick up a few in the summer.
We never know. We never know. We could have 32, and then all of a sudden I'll be calling you in July.
Right, and say, "I need another teacher."
Yeah. May 24th, we had our senior luncheon, and we worked with our, pardon me, Student Council, led by Kate Daly. So, she had our student council greet students. Patty Carpenter, our art teacher, had some of the little kids make placemats for them. And they put on a great performance by our middle school jazz band. They sound phenomenal. Middle school jazz band sounds phenomenal. So, that was a success. Tina had recommended, I think, the last board meeting, the capstone projects, and some of the kids in the Stafford Program that made some presentations on vaping and the effects of vaping and electronic devices. They, Mr. Schneider was able to have them squeeze it in, to have them talk to our fifth graders, which was very well received. As I wrote in here, it's, we haven't had a concert in over two and a half years. We had two, both our elementary concert and our middle school concert, which was, you know, packed to the brim as usual, great. Middle school jazz band also performed in Orwell, and they also went to Jazz Fest in Burlington. We had a wonderful Memorial Day ceremony. That was, you know, again, well-attended. Students just back into routine, memorize speeches. Members of the Legion came to do the colors. I put a little blurb in here about fifth grade being published authors. A lot of stuff about fifth grade. Released the trout, they had five, that they released a couple of weeks ago. Wax Museum was amazing. That was last week. Kids did a phenomenal job, excellent job.
I really enjoyed the pictures.
Yeah, yeah. I think I got everybody there. We also had the fourth grade science fair. Again, I, Tina was one of our guest judges. It's really tough for me to judge science fairs moving forward, but we did it. Everybody did a phenomenal job. And I was just so impressed on Mrs. McDougal, our middle school science teacher as well, just their speaking, their ability to speak, look people in the eye, please and thank you, all those soft skills go such a long way. Everybody did a great job. End of year studies, it's similar to Rutland High School's ESS plan. This is something that Mike Rowe helped kick-start with a few teachers a number of years ago. So, this is just the last three days of school for some of the eighth graders. It's amazing. I want to do everyone. So, I have a laundry list of things that kids are doing, from building picnic tables, website design, graphic design, cooking, swimming, creative writing, coding, 3D printing, I mean, you name it, it's happening at our school. It's awesome. We're working, we've just about wrapped up transition meetings. I never realized how much time it takes to create a class list. It is hours and hours and hours to do that. And our teachers do a phenomenal job. We meet with all of the teachers for next year to talk in detail about the child that they're getting, which is priceless, if you ask me. So, those are currently taking place. We have summer school. So, Bailey Sanders is going to be teaching our middle school, summer school this year. And I reached out to Jay Slanker, Principal of West Rutland. He was able to secure some staff to do summer school through USR Fund. So, it's been a team effort. So, we will also have a teacher teaching our elementary kids. So, we're finishing up with referrals. So, we will have both summer school programs happening. Our students are able to attend Tapestry if they sign up in time at the other locations. And I know there was a question on here about ESY, that's Extended School Year for students on IEPs. And I know that both Christine and Kimberly are actively looking to staff. So, I do know, we do have a few Rutland Town school teachers that are doing that, but I know we're still looking to staff that. So, they're actively advertising and trying to recruit. I put in a message here from Same Son of Vermont. They shared about our solar panels. Again, picnic tables are happening. Just a few updates from Kelly. We're still looking to hire a full-time custodian. If anybody knows of anybody looking, call me, email me, text me, find me. And then just some end-of-the-year dates. So, we have field day tomorrow, which is like one of my favorite things I look forward to, with our younger students, picnics, of course, eighth grade graduation. I'm so excited. It should be a good event. Our last day of school is this Friday, dismissal at quarter of 12. And then I have our summer school dates in there.
Eighth grade graduation, are we going to have that streamed also?
Yes. Yep. Mr. Whitman, it will be on our YouTube page, on our athletics page. So, it will be live-streamed. And then PEG TV comes, and they usually, you guys usually sell a recording for a small date to parents. So, they're on the docket to come, and it'll be live-streamed. So, we do ask if graduates could just have no more than eight guests attend. If there's more, they'll just, there'll be some standing room in there.
I know that we don't figure, or you don't figure out time of the school day until later in the summer, correct?
We need time in school.
Like, sometimes at school day, when the school starts and ends.
Oh, we have that now. So, we'll share that in our newsletter.
Okay. Because I, when I was at the school last week, it sounded like teachers had no idea that there were, you know, we did overhaul the schedule a little bit next year, that there's no shortened day, like there has traditionally.
Right.
And that there are some extra half-days instead, so that teachers can get their PD.
Throughout the year, not the same week.
So, just wanted to make parents aware that that's changing.
Yeah, and they've had that calendar for a while that outlines that, and I've shared that.
But even though it's been out there, teachers didn't even realize that. So, that's why I'm saying, I just wanted to mention it again, just to make it, you know, a little bit more transparent, that there are definitely some changes next year, and to take a look at that schedule that's been in the newsletter for a while and everything else.
And I did, just real quick, it's not on my board report, principal's report, but I did meet with an individual today who's an educator, who's hopefully going to speak to our staff, thank you Billy for the recommendation, in August. And he was completely shocked. He was like, "Well, how many teachers do you have leaving?" You know, "How many open positions?" And he was just like, "What?" So, I think that says something right there, that we have really good teacher retention. So, we are still looking for, we are looking for fair educators within the district. We are looking for special educators within the district, and we are looking for people to work summer.
And I know there's a couple custodian.
Yes.
Throughout the district.
Yes, there are.
They'll come to Rutland Town first.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Moving on, personnel. I did not see any resignations this week, this month, which is great.
Yes.
So, we're going to move on to contract recommendations. So, I'd like to start with new hire under support staff, support staff, Tim Snell as a custodian, and Elizabeth Yadao as our behavior specialist. And Tim Snell is also a support staff CBA contract for the following year as well. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Tim. What's your motion? To approve?
Yes. The support staff.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Then, under extracurricular, as listed, there's several names. I won't listen now, but they will be in the report. Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the statements.
Thank you, Billy. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Thank you. And vacancies are listed in your pocket, both internal and through the GRCSU for your information. Are there any comments on that? Okay, moving on. Chairs report. The Executive Committee did not meet since our last meeting, so I do not have anything to report. And the GRCSU unofficial minutes from our last meeting were included in the email that was sent by Christine. Were there any questions or comments on those? Seeing none, we will move on. Policies. I think we'll start with second read.
Do we, do we do anything with the, I'm sorry, just about to do it, with the committee's activity report, or no? That really was helpful.
Yes. So, Eric, who is the chair of the Policy Committee, has come up with a little summary sheet to kind of give us a little background on what's discussed during the Policy Committee meeting and what's changed. They've also started to highly embed the changes from the original, or at least the most recent draft of the policies, which has been very helpful. So, I would like to thank Eric for including that. I don't have it as a bullet point on the agenda, because it's more for your knowledge while you're reading through the policies. But if you had any comments about it, feel free to bring it up before we start discussing. Jeff or Billy, since you're on that committee, did you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add.
So, thanks again to Eric for giving that to us. So, F-15, I just had some formatting that, a lot of the formatting changes were done from the original first read, but there was, I think, a space and possibly a return that was missing after number two, where it says that, where there should be a separation between a student who is at least 16 years of age and is enrolled in public school and fails to attend, and is not excused from school attendance. And then I think there should be a space, and then a student may be excused from compulsory attendance if the student, that should be brought out to be in line with the, right under the definitions for the purpose of this policy, because it's a separated kind of entity like that. Other than that, I didn't have anything else to change. So, do I have a motion to approve that?
Do you want to do them one at a time, or?
Well, the second reads?
Yeah.
We can do them all together, I suppose. F-24, are there any comments? I have none either. B-1, Board Member Education, any comments?
The only comment, I guess, is just kind of for the board information. If you have a burning desire to go to, say, the annual meeting or whatever, is maybe think far enough ahead so we make sure we have money in the budget. Because right now, there is none. We usually find it. But I, there is, I mean, like, there really, I think I was the last one to go to some of them. But, just to give you a heads up.
I think there is some line item for our board, board money. I think that, we had looked at that before.
And Sherry found a line item. So, they never use it.
Yeah, but how much, I mean, because we did that for like...
I forget, was it $3,000? I think it was a decent amount, yeah.
Okay, because I know we used that, like, when we have the...
We used that for the social.
Right, the social, and then we had...
That's why it probably hasn't been used.
Right. And then we had the one, usually we have another one where we ask the public to come in and discuss, if you remember, in cafeteria.
Yes, yes.
Things like that, but I'm, as far as the board themselves. But as long as we have that line item, that's great. Never mind.
And I believe that the annual conference is October 20th, 21st, something like that, at Lake Maury. So, if you are interested, let me know, and we can try to win something.
It is gorgeous there. You just kind of, yeah, you have to look and see if there's anything great. I mean, it is a good meeting to go to, the annual. As long as the topics they're discovering or discussing are, you know, within your passion zone, that's awesome. Yeah. This was like I went, I think, I'm not sure.
Where can we get that agenda?
From the BSBA site.
If you go on the site, yeah.
I don't think they've developed it yet.
Probably not for October, but...
Yeah, but they probably have the save the date kind of information. F-4, Education Records, any comments? D-3, Substitute Teachers, any comments? D-7, Employee Unawful Harassment, any comments? The only thing I had, and this is my personal opinion, but it doesn't have to happen. Just A, B, and C, just indent them because they're underneath number three, so that it just kind of shows that it's not stuck.
Peaky, peaky, peaky.
I like, I like the nice layout. All right. And the final second read is E-2, School Crisis Prevention and Response. Now that there's no comments, do I have a motion?
To approve all the second reads.
With formatting errors?
Yes.
With formatting errors. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Lynette. And now we're on to the first reads. So, we have F-8, Interscholastic Sports. And before I go further, Chris, I was just curious, just for the public to know, where are these worn, the second reads?
Same place that the meetings are worn. So...
Wherever the meetings were.
We wore them the same places. So, when we went through and our rework, the location we chose, everything's worn the same place.
So, are they worn before our meeting, before the second read?
Yes.
So, all these should be...
You don't have to warn them before first reads. It's only the first reads. You don't have to warn them before first reads, it's only before approval.
Okay, so ten days before the second reads go up, they should be on the school bulletin board?
Correct.
Online?
Yeah. So it'll be the same place that the meeting wore, yeah.
So where, so I couldn't find them online.
So if you go to the calendar, there should be, in there, so I'll talk to Christine to see where online it should be worn, but-
I just wasn't sure where to look.
But if you did not choose the website for a warning, then Christine will not put it on the website, but if she put it on the, it's going the same exact place, I'll have to see exactly where it was, but I don't know specifically where Rattlestown, the exact locations, things are being worn. So, you know, we post them here, we'll post them in the school office, we'll send them there, so that, you know, Sherry and Pam should have those up at the main office, so. We should get the town office moment worn.
So all the places that we warn, things are posted?
They should.
Perfect. All right, so-
The actual policies are posted there with a little note?
The warnings, the second reads should be posted, so.
I don't think they are.
They are.
No.
This is posted on our goals.
The agenda.
I've never seen any of the-
We set out the second reads for policies, that they should be there, so we'll-
That's what I was hoping to make.
Christine set out their money, so.
But I know, like, this stuff is very outside.
The agendas and minutes are, right?
Yeah, and, uh, minutes?
So the minutes should be also-
That's the agenda.
Those are posted on the website.
Just the website?
Right.
Publicly available, yes.
Okay. So if those are posted on the website, shouldn't the policy warnings also be, since some of them are?
No.
Should they be separate?
No.
But they should be at the school, they should be here.
Yes, so we're looking to why they're, what the breakdown is.
Okay, thank you. Because I just want the public to have, if they do have concerns, to have a chance to look at it, and just so that we-
Harsha Kelly, if you have concerns, just let us know.
I've never seen them, so I don't know.
Yeah.
I trust you.
That's good to know.
They're on the website too, so you can always access policies there too.
But not the change, not the drops and things? So they're different?
People can always reach out to any one of us as well, so. And that's why I encouraged, so if you have, board members, if you ever have a staff member, please direct them to myself, Eric, or, you know, right away, we'll get there. Thank you.
All right, any, sorry, I dropped the F-8, interscholastic sports, there's no comments, correct? All right, F-17. I just, I really appreciated that some of it was in red, but there's also a lot of changes from the original F-17, so I was just hoping that Eric and company, if they could, I think that this was new, and this, that this had been discussed in the policy committee before, so it was only the changes from the second draft, but it would be really helpful if we saw the differences from the original F-17 when we get them, I would, that would be really helpful. And I did have a question, just to discuss amongst us. In number eight, it said that a parent or guardian can opt a student out of participation in any non-emergency invasive physical examinations or screening that is, one, required as a condition of attendance. So my question is, if it's required, why can they opt out? I was just curious as to the rationale for that. I don't know if you discussed that, and, like, why can they opt out of something that we're requiring, that doesn't make sense to me. If it's optional, I can see why they can opt out.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't remember discussing that.
Maybe just privacy, or, no, I'm down here with physical examination. I would assume that is why, of course, I don't think we have that-
Or screening.
Right, I don't think we have that in-
Well, I'm thinking, if a student is a certain age, if they're a certain age, they can opt out of anything.
Right. I think that's more of a high school thing, because I don't think we do physical examination.
But if we are requiring it?
But I think them opting out, I don't think means that they attended, so them opting out, maybe they're going home, they're not coming to school. That's the opt-out.
I don't know, it's just, if we're requiring it, I mean, I don't know what we require that's a non-emergency invasive physical exam or screening, but if we're requiring it as a condition of attendance?
I'm just wondering if it isn't the sports or teams or physical, you know, they have to hand in all that stuff that's required before they can play on a team. I don't know, not on anymore.
I'm just curious, like-
But I'm assuming that's what it is. So you would need greater permission not to do the physical, it is required for any sport.
But if it's required, then it's required.
Right, but if they opt out, they're not on the team, so, I mean. I would assume that's high school, basically, but it could be for, I assume it's, the way I understood it would be that, because we just don't do physicals at the school, only in sports-related type incidents, and then it's a form laboring in, so that's required.
But if you read the whole thing, it says, notification and an opportunity for the parent or guardian to opt the student out of participation in any non-emergency invasive physical exam or screening that is required as a condition of attendance. So it doesn't say to play, to participate in athletics.
Right, right, I understand it doesn't.
So that would be, for instance, if the school is requiring a hearing exam for entrance, this is saying they can opt out of the hearing exam.
They might at the school. I know it doesn't go into great explanation, because it would take quite a bit, but say, instead of having the school test the teeth or test the hearing, they'll have their own doctors do it.
Which I think is great, but it doesn't say that anywhere here, that they must do it on their own, and submit results, or something like that.
Right, I'm just thinking, it was just kind of understood type thing, I don't know.
I think it's just a general statement, if they choose to do it, or if they do not do it, if they have the age.
Then it's, but if it's required, then where does, where do we draw the line?
Right, maybe, yeah.
I don't know, I just think it should be reworded, so.
So is there anything you can think of at the elementary level? I'm thinking this is more high school, but.
This is above me.
They do those screeners, they used to.
We, right, we do, we screen.
The little eye thing.
Yeah, we do eye and hearing.
But that's not for attendance, that's like, you know, they get their piece of, you know, brings-
Yeah, we do health screenings.
Right, that's what it is, health screening, it's not for attendance, but it's-
Yeah, that's what throws it off, for attendance.
It's the whole wording, you know, if it's not, if it's optional, it's one thing, I don't know, I just don't-
Because it's a first read, can we send that back to committee?
Just to explore what the wording is. And then, due to the formatting, so that one says, one, it has to be required, and then there's a space, and then it says, two, so I think that's supposed to be connected to that, and there's also a three, so it says, required as a condition of attendance, administered by the school and scheduled by the school in advance, and not necessary to protect the immediate health and safety of the student or of other students.
Right, so it should be a health screen.
Right, but if it's required, I just, yeah, I think it should be looked at and poor at it. And that was all I had on that one.
That's all, huh?
That's it.
I got a pick on you.
F-18, which is federal child nutrition act and wellness policy, are there any comments on that one?
No, either one.
So I just had a quick question, well, I had a couple, but, on page number two on B, it said, under goals for physical education and physical activity, it says, the district shall offer opportunities for students in grades K through 12 to participate in at least thirty minutes of physical activity within or outside the school day. Physical activity may include recess and movement built into the curriculum but does not replace physical education classes. So I was just curi, and it says, within or outside the school day, so how do we meet that at the school? I was just curious, like, what does that mean, particularly for six, seven, eight, that don't have, you know, that fifteen minute of recess? I know that you're trying to put that in for next year.
Well, we, sometimes, a lot of teachers bring their kids outside, and sometimes, like, especially now that it's warmer, we do that for, like, today for lunch, we had our, we had a group of kids, elementary, they got ten more extra minutes of recess, because everybody was done.
But this is like, say this is February 17th, so what does that look like on that day?
For middle school kids?
It's icy, it's negative two outside, can't go outside.
My, I'm sorry, these are not in order, so I'm struggling to flip to the page, can you tell me which one it is again?
Yeah, it's F-18, federal child nutrition. It's page number two, two B. I was just curious what that looks like, like, does that include the minutes walking between classes? You know, does that add into it? Do you have, you know, a five-minute rain, you know?
Yeah, because when you look at the, physical activity may include recess and movement built into the curriculum, it's not a place, so this is one that's a little struggle with for to, the higher up, you know, but people see that on lecture, they'll be doing like a Go Noodle, and things along those lines, like, you know, movement breaks, that would be at the high school, you know, with the older grades, it's a little more difficult to do, but technically, a movement from, you know, a passive period, but not qualified, because that's curricular related, so it's something which we are looking at our school. I know that, when things will be talked about, a wellness policy, each of our schools, you know, that's something which we have to have around health and nutrition as well as this, and so that would be something, how do we do this?
Well, one of the statements, which is pretty, it's the same, we shall offer opportunities, and it's outside of the school day, so it could be our athletics. We are offering multiple athletic programs, so like, as Chris is saying, trying to jog my memory here, oftentimes it's how high schools obliged by that, we offer walking club, basketball team, volleyball.
So if you have a teacher outside of the school before or after school, you provide opportunities for students to visit and participate, or, so, right, it's very loose.
No, we used to do that, but with COVID, what happens when students come in from the bus?
So we used to, and we stopped that due to a high number of safety concerns, a high number.
So now we don't do that?
Correct, and it was basically, and our middle school kids, I will say, I know we talk about recess, they stand there, so we try to give them-
Structure.
Active, structured, thank you, structured activities to do, because even when they were offered that time outside, they would, they would stand and talk out in the black tower, so we, we offer them, like, you know, we all need to play kickball, or we all need to walk the field or do something, because they would choose not to. But again, this means offer, so it can be in sports that we offer after school.
So it's just in those months where we don't have sports, and, you know, some sports, you know. I was just curious, just to think about-
The upper level are-
The upper level is-
Middle school is hard, because we used to have recess for them, and we had to make way for academics, oh shucks, so we, we had to cut down on recess or do away with it, or, so it is very, very difficult to bill it in for the middle schools.
They have more PE though, than-
But it says, it doesn't include-
Right, but it doesn't, it says, it does not replace physical education classes.
But I think it doesn't, no.
It doesn't replace it, so that's-
How I used to be able to include it, did it change?
It just means that we don't, yeah, replace it. And you just have to, you have to offer movement for kids, which we do.
Yeah.
Or team building.
Yeah.
And then, on E, it says, food should not be used in district schools as a reward or punishment. So does that mean, like, you can't give a piece of candy if a student, you know, won the, I know, but-
According to-
According to this.
Nutrition should be a candy, period.
Right.
So, yeah, but-
I told you, you didn't want my opinion on this one, so I'm just kind of getting it along, and it's ridiculous.
These are guidelines, I think there are exceptions, obviously, if a teacher, you know, is rewarding a class, or, you know, is, you know, a good job, or if it's a kid who's having a tough day, and they come down to Sarah X's office, and here's a piece of candy, that gets them packed with any, I don't, there's, I think, really it's more about the, you know, the punishments in terms of, like, withholding that.
Yeah, I don't think that would happen.
You will not receive a cupcake that we brought in, so.
All these people that lay smarties on their desk, now on very smarties before a spade like that.
Yeah, this is just one, it went way out of whack about three, four years, four years ago, and, yeah, it's just, you can't bring cupcakes in, because that's not nutritious.
So is this a mandatory policy that we have to follow, or can we amend it to, you know, what we're actually doing?
We'll take a look at that, but I know that there is a, there are certain nutritional requirements that we can't change, I mean, the worry about food should not be used as a reward, punishment type thing, I know, I know that's just good practice, you just, you know, can't, unless they can withhold lunch from the student, because they're, you know, have lunch detention, or-
But we break it by giving them a second lunch, if they're still hungry, so, I'm just saying-
You're still providing with an opportunity to have lunch.
But I'm just saying that they don't want you to, because it's not good for them. They're eating too much.
Well-
So I'm just, I'm giving you an example of how-
If they were going back for seconds to the salad bar, or, you know, going back, and, you know, I mean, but they're, not, they're going back for seconds to a piece of, you know, chicken nuggets, or the fried foods, or the fry, you know, meats, right.
Stuff you want to eat.
My daughter's, I mean, yeah, so, but, I just think, you know, we'll take a look at the wellness policy, and, you know, I can look under the VSBAs, and we can bring that back and just see what-
What's actually required and what we can see how, because I'd much rather have policies that we can actually feel good about following.
And we do, like, in the handbook, a few years ago, I did write something, just as a procedure, that we encourage healthy snacks.
So this is under the required policies?
It's just everything in it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's different.
It says guidelines, so that's, yeah.
I mean, years ago, years ago, they would actually punish children. No, you're overweight, you can have an apple. This, literally, the teachers would do that, stuff like that, so I think this is where it comes from, it's eons old, but, yeah, but that's where the punishment part is mentioned.
That line isn't a valid policy, and there I am, so.
Of the required.
The required, yes.
And then, most of this probably is, the 4C is also another one that I think it's hard for us to completely follow, like, I know, like, little candy cane, telegram, that's for, you know, Christmas or holiday time, you know, things like that.
So, this is something which, you know, during the norm operation, that we have, we are expected to follow USDA, you know, nutritional guidelines, that's why you see a lot of schools will have bake sales before school or after school, because then you're, you fall outside of those guidelines, but you're right, that during lunch hours or during the day, that we are held to some fair regulations around USDA nutritional guidelines, so.
Technically, when I was reading, because I referenced that federal policy, and it said, from midnight the night before, or something, through a half an hour after school, you have to follow.
Yeah, okay, from midnight?
From midnight.
Okay, we're going to go into their homes and make sure, Johnny, go back to bed, you can't have anything to eat.
It's like when Mike does the recreation fundraiser, that stuff, he brings in, you know, Gatorade, but he brings in candy and all that kind of stuff, too.
I guess if it wasn't, every day, you can go down and get a piece of candy as a treat.
Like a school store, yeah. Well, I know my kids have commented that there's no ice cream anymore, and there's, you know, there's no fun snacks at lunch.
Because kids were just getting, years ago, remember, we had that chips and Gatorade, so they made money, and then we had kids just getting Gatorade and chips, so, yep, the school boards said, no more, and it was the same thing with ice cream, we had issues with ice cream.
Well, according to this, you can't sell it.
Yeah, we can't anymore, but-
Yeah, you can't afford it.
That was like I said, four years ago, five years ago, maybe, at the most, that whole era where you can only have so many calories and-
I know, there was a big debate about soda and-
Oh, yeah, can't have soda.
In the teaching room.
Oh, yeah.
All right, moving on. F-19, student distribution of non-school-sponsored literature. The only comment I had, and I wanted to comment, I really, well, besides this comment, I really appreciate the policy committee moving out the student self-expression part and moving it to, I think it was F-24, because they both kind of cover the same thing.
Right.
That's right. I was just thinking that there should be a space between number seven and the next paragraph, as per formatting.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yeah.
So we have people that give us information that we include in our newsletter all the time. So there was some, I mean, whether it be art camp, there was one for students for getting their haircut, to M S J open house, round high school open house, like babysitter certification, I put that in newsletters. Like if I say, oh, this may be of interest to kids.
The only thing that, we cannot appear to favor one over the other, so that's the hard part.
So like, you'll only put in public high school open houses, not private?
Oh.
Vice versa, so don't do.
So as long as you're doing all open houses, it's fine.
Whoever sends it to me, like if I don't, I don't get them from all the area schools, but if they send them to me.
But the problem is, if we put it in, it appears to some people that you are favoring them by putting it in. So because we have, say, high school, for instance, we have a day or whenever that the kids come in with their parents and they can talk to them.
To register, or high school fair.
Right.
Right.
So that should take care of everybody. So there shouldn't be a reason to put it in our newsletter.
Well, the reason that I do is because some of the seventh graders, you know, haven't made that choice yet.
This specifically says student distribution.
Yeah, student distribution.
Oh.
Never mind, moving on. Thank you, Tim.
All right, F-20.
Oh.
The standard entry age kindergarten admission. It looks like the only change to this policy, which is F-20, is that no appeals to this policy will be considered was added. Any comments on that discussion? Moving on, F-25, this policy on Section 504 and ADA grievance protocol for students and staff. Any comments on that one? I have a question, is this separate from I E P? Like if there's a, there's a whole different process, that's what I thought. G-6, which is complaints about instructional materials. I had a comment, I felt like number four and five should be switched in order because it sounded like if the principal got a complaint and it couldn't be resolved informally, that they then gave them the objection form to fill out. And then once that came back, which was listed above number five, then the rest of it was put into motion. So I just thought four and five should be switched. And then.
Somebody did bring that up at the meeting.
But it didn't get.
Well, he might have just, might have squashed it. I'm pretty sure he brought, somebody brought that up.
So the objection form is attached to the packet that's given in number five. Oh, there's not, nothing attached to this, yeah. That's in the said packet that the principal was handing over.
So, just so you know, that's one of the summer projects that Christine will be working on is as the update procedures, we'll also have, I mean, policies, we'll have the accompanying procedures listed next to them, so like, once, like G-6, you'll have that objection form which would be right there on the link, so if someone wanted to click on that, they could fill out, so.
That's great, thank you.
Avoid the attachment, just make things a lot easier.
So I just think switching four and five. And then, under the appeal, it said if the complainant is dissatisfied with the outcome of the review of the complaint and has properly followed the implementation protocol, he or she may ask to have the complaint heard by the school board. But what I didn't see above that was any mention about going, if not happy with what, what happened with the packet and the principal, the superintendent.
Right, the chain of command.
It was kind of missed. And maybe that's in that packet that I don't have access to, I don't know.
Because before it come to the school board, it always has to go principal, superintendent.
Yeah.
Well, in this case, it really would go to probably the assistant superintendents, to the director of curriculum instruction.
Right.
So maybe that should go back and add that in. Any other comments on that one? And then H-3, get into the home. Any comments on advertising in schools, public solicitations, or student fundraising?
Like I said, it's just, it's very short and it's fine, it's just that we have to be careful. We cannot appear that we're favoring anybody for anything.
Did you want to add anything added to it?
Nope.
No. And.
Just be mindful of fundraising.
Yeah.
Period.
Yep. And last one, H-4, visits by parents, community members, or media interviewing, filming, or videotaping and reporting.
Yeah, I want you to make sure that every parent that comes to graduation on Wednesday signs a release so that they can take pictures of. I'm only kidding, I mean, you can really get carried away with this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have like that all-inclusive form that we, that we send to all students, so includes like permission slip, videotaping, et cetera. So that covers us for this.
Exactly, I mean, it's just, yeah, that could be really, no, no changes.
Okay, great.
I make a motion that we do not have a meeting in July.
Discussion.
I agree with that.
Unless something pops up and we need to have a special meeting.
We can always do it.
We can always do it.
Yeah.
Virtually. But we'll plan not to have one in person in July unless absolutely necessary.
You got it, boss.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next meeting will be August 8th then, barring any special meetings. And that will be at the G R C S U central office due to the air conditioning. The board retreat is, you may notice now at Southside Steakhouse. The Rutland Country Club was being used, and they weren't able to give us the space we needed. So it will be at the Southside Steakhouse from 5:00 to 8:00, and we will have dinner there. The public is welcome to come and purchase their own dinner and be part of our goal setting.
Yep.
They'd like to. We're also hoping that Chris and Lisa will be able to attend.
Do you want?
We yes.
Well, I don't know, it's the board retreat.
I don't know who comes.
Well, usually they do, because, yeah, because it's, it's a retreat, but it's also goal setting, so we need to discuss things.
Yeah, if you both are available, we'd love to have a.
I shouldn't speak, I'm sorry, I was speaking as my old chairman.
You're the only one that's been to a retreat, so we are looking to you for your.
It's up to the board's discretion as to who attends, so.
But I, I'm sure there are going to be questions as far as, because we need you, we need Chris in order to move with our goals, because what we may think is important and we need as a goal, you may be already doing or have done.
Yeah.
You know, so that's why they've always been included before, it's up to you guys.
Makes sense.
Yeah, happy to have you. So you don't know if Lisa will be able to be there or?
I do not know. Lisa, we just have a ten board retreat, but if you want her to be there, she can.
I would, I would like her to be there, I think she does a lot on the curriculum, and I think it would be helpful. If she didn't mind, if she's not too busy.
Yep, well, we're talking.
And then that moves us on to good and welfare, if you might have anything to share.
Yeah, I want to congratulate all the girls and coaches that did the girls on the run.
Oh my gosh, you forgot, and I ran with them.
Yeah.
I totally forgot, thank you, I was there.
It was really amazing, like my daughter participated, and it was just, what a wonderful experience for our girls to have, and what great role models that they have. They raised over $3,000 for other girls in Vermont that cannot afford to participate in the program, and they also made a donation to the Humane Society, too. So like, good stuff.
Thank you, I completely forgot. And mentors and teachers that participated, so thank you to them, too.
And also as a parent who coached this summer, I really want to thank Mike Rowe in the rec department. Did an amazing job with spring sports that are starting to wrap up, and I'm sure he's ready to flow it into summer, but thanks to Mike and the rec department because it was pretty great.
I mean, all of our coaches, all of our teams, we haven't had any problems, they have great time. It's really great to sit there and as a parent, watch the games, and you don't segregate from the other school, they're right around you, you're intermixed. And there's never any, the only time I've ever had problems with spectators, I guess, is at basketball. Because for some reason, some of the parents are really.
Well, they're on top of each other, too.
Yeah, but wonderful, never saw win or lose, they were always great. It was nice seeing them shake hands or bump hands again. So I just want to congratulate the coaches, they did a great job. And the kids.
I want to thank Kelly for leading the P T O for the last few years, and Marcia for helping out. Really appreciate it, thank you for all your time and effort.
Why are you getting off?
What? Oh, it's been a long couple of years.
Yeah, but the E C years are coming now.
Is there a new leader of the P T O?
Not yet.
Oh, yeah?
No.
We're working on it. We're really working hard on it, but not yet, so if you're interested.
Well, if you want to, remember I said if you want to get a wire that I can give to new families for kindergarten registration and stuff like that.
I already got it, it's PM, it's the same one, I will refer, she got it.
Okay. We can blast stuff on Facebook or webpage. I'll do it, yeah.
I was able to go to the science fair, and I was just blown away with how it's changed over the years and how the technology. One girl had her, her whole thing on a, on a iPad, and it's just watching everything. The way years ago when everything was blowing all over the floors and all that, all the messes. And I said to Catherine, I says, good job for cleaning this up, you know? And the kids were just, you walk over to them and they would just start right in with their, the knowledge. My kids are both scientists, so it's like, just so great to see the, the, the science going on. It was awesome.
See, the wax museum is always my favorite because I get to push that button.
They were so good.
I really, I loved Tim's daughter's reaction to the younger kids pushing her button like this.
She had two buttons, one like exploratory and one a different one. So if they hit both buttons, she'd go on the fritz.
Yeah. The kids had that. All the kids did a great job at both the science fair and the wax museum.
It was awesome, great energy, so.
Lots of enthusiasm.
Yeah, I felt the same.
There was like nine parents who were like, looking like, oh, let's go, you know, like other grades' parents, they were like, I want to be part of that, you know, they want to.
And I have to say that I have heard, probably because of location where my office is, a lot of comments about how great it is to be back in the school, to be able to have lunch with the kids, the senior, everything, I have gotten so many compliments on the band, the jazz band. Everybody's excited to get some normalcy, to be able to go out and see, you know, for two and a half, three years, they haven't actually seen what they've been paying for. And like I said, I get a lot of comments on Rutland Town School's website because there's more and more pictures going on, that everybody just loves it. I would like to ask though, and I don't want any discussion on this because it can be a hot topic for me, is with our I T department, we, I see a lot, a lot from Proctor, West Rutland on Twitter and other social media things about what's going on at the schools, the ballgames, or whatever. Rutland Town never appears, and I know that.
I don't use Twitter.
But I'm just saying, I know that we need to contact her to say, listen, we're having graduation this night.
Contact who?
Shannon.
Shannon?
Congratulations, she will blast out on the G R C S U Twitter account.
Oh, yeah, she, she's been at, she's doing like ice playing, she's doing graphic design with our kids this week.
Which is great, which is wonderful, but I'm just saying that, I'm not on Twi, well, I am on Twitter. I am and I'm not, I do get the information, you'll never see me post anything, but just to get out, again, it's another way to show Rutland Town, the ballgames, the whatever, even if it's only just a blurb, just to get our name out there more. And it's, and Rutland Town isn't the only one, I don't see like Wells or, or Middletown Springs very much.
Yeah, I had a Twitter page a couple of years ago when there wasn't, there weren't that many, that many followers. We tried to link it with Facebook and something, it stopped syncing, so that's why.
Well, that, and this would be the group soup, so.
Oh, so you want the.
Shannon does it.
To make sure that it, oh, sorry.
That you have to contact her and say, this is going on, whatever, and she may or may not be able to make it, I understand.
She, yeah.
But, you know, I want to make sure that we are reaching out to her with some.
And she comes to events, I'll just let her know that we're not getting airtime.
Well, no, 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 it's, I don't do that.
What I'm saying is, yeah, they're just supposed to get airtime because they are directly reaching out to Shannon with tweets, you know, or things, hey, just here's a little tidbit, you know, and then she will post.
So basically, whatever you're putting on Facebook, if you also just C C Shannon, then she'll post it on the G R C S U.
Yeah, there has to be an easier way to do that, because I post constantly on there, and like always posting.
Yep. But that's all, and I know we have to personally.
I guess like the bigger stuff, copy and paste what you're going to post and email her.
Right.
Yeah, I'll figure it out.
Okay, that's all.
Well, my, my good farewell before we adjourn here was just, and it was mentioned a little bit, but the concert was like spot on. It's like so cool to see 300-plus kid, like, I can't even get my kids under control at 7:30 in the morning, you know? So at 6:30 at night, you know, they got 300 kids singing in unison, and everyone applauding, and it was like, just awesome, awesome stuff.
I figured it would be packed, so I did not attend, whereas normally I do. Because it's the first one in so many years, I figured every grandparent, aunt, uncle, whoever is going to be there, and so I'm just so glad that it went really, really well. A lot of people were pleased.
Yeah, it was great. Says a lot for the art, art department, you know.
Music department.
Yeah, music and arts, yeah. Yeah, nice job.
All right, I do not believe we need an executive session tonight, is that correct? Then I need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Jeff.
I bit my tongue.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.